I just turned to 6:30. Call the meeting to order, and we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to its own justice for all.
All right, first up, we have the consent agenda. We'll be looking for a motion to approve that. Scott, the council minutes from September 2nd, the community center commission minutes from September 8th, EDA minutes from September 8th, HRA from September 9th, the library board minutes from September 9th, parking rack from September 10th, planning commission from September 9th, utility commission from August 28th. There is also two exempt gambling permits for bingo at Bark for October 21st and November 18th, both of 2025, and the regular bills.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jason, second by Scott. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next up is public comment on the variance request, and Dustin Harold is here. And you can come up to this table here. Thank you for being here. If you'll have a mic in front of you, just hit the button so that when the red light is on, then everyone can hear you. As a reminder, the public comment section is, we hope to stay around the five-minute mark. And it's typically not a discussion, but we're here to hear what you have to say, and we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Wyndham City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I received a denial regarding a variance application that I applied for through City Hall. My project as proposed to the planning commission, along with the compromise project plan, should be in your possession now. The vote tally regarding my project was two votes in favor and four votes opposed at the planning commission meeting September 9th, 2025. I will say that I have some serious concerns involving the decision about what I may or may not do with my property. When considering a variance application, a city exercises quasi-judicial authority. This means that the city acts like a judge in evaluating the facts against the legal standard. The city's role is limited to applying the legal standard of practical difficulties to the facts presented by the application. If the applicant meets the standard, then the city may grant the variance. That's a citation from the League of Minnesota Cities 2021. These practical difficulties were addressed at the start of the planning commission meeting. I discussed the scope of my proposed project. When the hearing was opened and it was appropriate for me to speak, I answered questions related to the proposed project scope and satisfied the commission. There were no other public comments, as my wife and I were the only citizens present at the meeting. Then the discussion among the commissioners began and problems manifested. Carol Hartman spoke very freely about how the project is a, quote, "bad idea", and, quote, "I don't think we can recommend City Council approve the variance, because if we let one fence go up, then they will go up all over town." Commissioner Hartman went on, voicing her opinion about my proposed project, introducing a narrative comparing it to a, quote, "prison fence". Ben Byam went on to say, quote, "I got word from the church that they don't want a fence." These dialogues are illustrations of a difference of opinion, not statements of fact. None of these statements are based on facts related to practical difficulties or legal standard. I will say that I believe these personal opinions were particularly injurious to the cause of my proposed fence project. Furthermore, the comment by Commissioner Byam audibly gave a voice to the Catholic Church after public hearing was closed. Whether it be a true or false statement, it was not based on fact or even related to the legal standard or the practical difficulties I presented, and the public hearing was closed. I can accept a denial of my variance application, but deny my variance based upon a finding of fact. However, my application meets the standard for granting a variance. I'm using the property in a reasonable manner. The location of the home on the lot is uniquely positioned, and a residential privacy fence will not alter the essential character of the locality. Collaboration, understanding, and community is what I believe all citizens want when pursuing any endeavor. I am sorry to report that my experience was not met with a majority of understanding, kindness, or fair alternatives. At a minimum, I am asking the City Council to take these comments into consideration and use them as a learning opportunity for your appointed planning and zoning commissioners. At a maximum, I am asking the City Council to approve my compromise project plan.
I've got 30 seconds left. I could field questions if that's warranted, or I can dismiss. Jason.
I saw the compromise thing which goes to the edge of your neighbor's garage. So it brings it in nine more feet, effectively, something like that. And I would like to see what the planning commission says about your compromise position before I make a final decision myself.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have department heads. Are there any department heads that would like to speak at this time? Nobody? All right. Number four on the agenda is Planning Commission recommendation for the variance application at 1605 Sixth Avenue, which is what we just heard from Dustin on, and we welcome Matt Fast to go over this with us.
Matt Fast, Building and Zoning. Applicants Dustin Harold and Ashley Harold filed an application requesting a variance to allow the installation of a front yard fence. Applicants live on a corner lot at the intersection of Sixth Avenue and 17th Street. The application specifically concerns the area of the fence that would parallel 17th Street. City Code provides that for lots where more than one yard fronts a public street, such as corner lots, all yards that front a public street shall be considered front yards for their entire width. City Code Section 152.424D requires that front yard fences shall not be more than four feet in height, must contain a gate on the side facing the street that is a minimum of three feet in width, and must have no more than 60% opacity of screening. The applicants are proposing a six-foot solid wood fence to be placed closer to the property line than the setback, and that would extend approximately nine feet in front of the neighbor's garage. Following published and mailed notice, the planning commission held a public hearing on this application on September 9th, 2025. Following review of the application information and code requirements, the public hearing, comments from the property owner, and additional code information provided by staff, the planning commission approved the motion to recommend the City Council deny this variance application. Reasons for this recommendation are set forth in the minutes from the September 9th meeting and include, but are not limited to, the following. Applicants have not established that their practical difficulties is defined by state statute and complying with the ordinance, and have not established their unique circumstances of the property. We're aware that subsequent to the planning commission meeting, applicant Dustin Harold submitted an agenda request to speak at the September 6th City Council meeting, and also that he is proposing a compromise location for the fence. Planning Commission did not have the opportunity to review or discuss his compromise location. Requesting that if the City Council chooses not to deny the variance, that the matter be remanded to the planning commission for review of the new proposed location of the fence and possible adoption of conditions concerning the fence.
I guess, Matt, what my concern is that we hire you to do this kind of stuff. So I call it unmuddy the waters, so we can see the things clearly, and if you, how do you see it?
I think in this compromise location, we should go back to the planning commission with it.
Okay. I'm good with that. Like I said, I asked Matt to do this stuff because he's what the city hires to, I call it unmuddy the waters, because I'm old school. If I can't see something black and white in front of me, I want to look into it and find out what it's about, and that's why we hire Matt to do, and I believe he does a good job. And I guess if he recommends it, I'd be more for it, too, then.
I definitely agree with your position to remand it back to planning commission. We'll make a motion to the same.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Jason and a second by Scott to send the variance request back to the planning and zoning commission for them to address the compromise fence location. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know. Okay. I would just like to say that, you know, one thing I look at, too, when we're looking at unique situations, too, is there was a public hearing. If there's a concern from the neighbor, you know, who the fence would be closest to, but it doesn't sound like the neighbor was at the public hearing or made any comment that I'm seeing in any of the notes. You know, that as a homeowner and living in a neighborhood, that would be my first thing, is if the neighbor objected, then yeah, then there's something more to look at. If the neighbor is not objecting, and this is a unique circumstance, then I think we need to look into it more. So I agree this should go back to the commission. And I would sure hope that the professionalism of the appointed people on our commission is kind of reiterated to them that this is a, they're appointed to this, and it's a professional, you know, hearing when they have these hearings. And so people need to act appropriately, and their comments need to be geared towards what the topic is and not personal or other comments. And so maybe just to relay that back to your commissioner board, because I don't like to hear that kind of thing from the public, that they're not having a good experience when they come to your board.
I guess that's something I'm kind of looking at, too, because did you get any written complaints from anybody from the church, or?
No, I had received no comments from the public.
So... We got to go by what the commissions or the, yeah, whatever they recommend, I guess. According to, when you said there was a compromise, what would that be?
After the planning commission meeting, I was cleaning up and packing up, and Dustin came back to my office, and I had made that drawing that was up on the screen with the proposed fence area. And Dustin had mentioned that he would compromise to pull it back to be even with the front of the house next door. It was after everybody had left, so planning commission is not aware of that compromise. And that's why I think if we go back to the planning commission, we can have a little different, quite a bit different look at that.
A couple of comments. I duly note that Dustin rightly pointed out, you know, comments like, "It looks like a prison fence" is probably not the best worded way to put that. And hearsay, if there's something from another group to say something, they really should have been in person or written a note or sent an email or something, so that's duly noted. And I appreciate the willingness of Dustin to have a compromise position, so we'll take a look at that the next planning commission.
And I would like to add, because I have spoken to Dust on this, that I do think that his neighbor would have been here in support, but was out of town, and she actually is here in support tonight. Not that it's relevant for her to speak or anything, but she did come with, so. So if we have no further discussion, does anyone else have anything on this?
The only thing, I guess, from the comments, it almost sounds like it's something personal rather than not.
So if there is no further discussion, we've had the motion made and seconded, and we'll vote on sending this back to the planning commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Next up is the Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant. A resolution is on the table, and Steve will go over that for us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So this is our annual operating reimbursement for the Wyndham Airport. The Minnesota Department of Transportation provides some support for the maintenance, and that can be mowing, it can be snow removal, those types of activities at the airport. This is a reimbursement basis, so every quarter, we record the hours and the activities that we've done. Those get turned in, and MINDOT will then give us reimbursement of part of our expenses. There's, I'd say, no city match, because we do the work, and not all of the money gets reimbursed, but getting $22,000 a year back from MINDOT for maintenance that we're doing out at the airport is a pretty good deal. So this would be over the next two state fiscal years, '26, '27, and so this would cover us. And so they're asking for a resolution approving, accepting the state grant for maintenance reimbursement.
I'd make the motion to accept.
I'll second.
And I'll have to abstain, because airport, yay!
The resolution has been introduced by Jim and seconded by Jenny. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Espin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have the 18th Avenue and Red Leaf Court Storm Sewer Improvement Project. And here today, we have Dennis, Mike, and Matt from Johnson Engineering Group, and they will go over the feasibility report with us. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Dennis. I have quite a lot of history on 18th Avenue. I've lived out there for 40 years. So, anyway, that's why I've got quite a lot of the history. And maybe, Steve, could you go to the, um, three, the third diagram? And I might, do you have a pointer, Stephen?
Maybe.
Otherwise, I can just go up there and maybe point. Oh, okay. So, um...
Is this the one you wanted?
Uh, let's see. Two more. Yeah, right there. So originally, this was all farm ground. And 18th Avenue was a complete township road. So down on River Road, there were three culverts, and then we call them number one, number two, and number three. Number one was, let's see. We call it number one, there's a eight, 36-inch going across by 17th Avenue. Yeah, go a little further, a little further if you can. Oh, that's fine. So then, the first one we're calling number one is the 36-inch culvert that goes across kind of diagonally from the, it'd be the northeast corner of 18th and River Road, and it goes across diagonally to the southwest corner of that. That's the original 36. During one of the floods in the early 60s or late 60s, they added another 54-inch culvert. That's the one we're calling number three. And then there's also a 36-inch culvert real close to the intersection of 18th and 17th. So those were the original three culverts. The flow from this watershed split and went to all three culverts at one time. So as the years went on, 17th got built, and that's down here a little ways, past the school, and that started to act as a dam, because they didn't put any storm sewer in during that period of time. So when we first moved out here, there was just culverts through Maple Park Circle and 17th Street before there wasn't a catch basin. So there was a ditch on the east side of the road, and as we got floods way back when, the water always went down the ditch, or it came down through here, went through the park, and then went through the 54-inch culvert by Al Valuens, if you know where he lives. So when we first originally came out here, that was the area that flooded. We didn't get any flooding, and as all this kept developing, they, and it's in the report, they extended the storm sewer up to its present position in about four years. It was kind of a yearly project that the city did. And by doing that, they took all, and then they put a dike across in the park, which caused all the water to go through the 33-inch culvert. And so if you, during the flood, like two years ago or whenever we had it, these two culverts don't take any water whatsoever, you know, very little. And it all has to go through this culvert. So that's where the analysis comes from there. So just a little history, just to kind of tell you where the flooding used to be and where the flooding is now. Because now the flooding occurs on, you know, Red Leaf Court and not down here in the park and by Al Valuens. Because those houses used to flood out when we first moved to town. So based on that, then Matt, Mike's going to give you analysis of what we ran.
Mike Johnson. Steve, if you could maybe go up to page, it starts on four, and I'll just kind of walk through what we did for the analysis. One down, yep, right there. So part of the analysis for this project was, we gathered, there's kind of a list down here and I'll just kind of briefly describe what they were. So we got LiDAR data from Mintopol, that's a DNR resource. And that was used to outline what the whole watershed is of the area that comes to those culverts that Dennis was just talking about. Along with that, we did a GPS survey along 18th Avenue that was used to get coordinates and elevations of the culverts that are in place throughout the watershed. So we could determine then, you know, where the water flow is happening through the watershed. From there, we analyzed storms or we got precipitation data. So we looked at a bunch of different storms that, from two-year, 24-hour storm to 10-year, all the way up to 100-year storm, which is somewhere between the 50 and 100-year storm is what we had in the flooding event two years ago. From there then, we built out a model in a hydrology modeling program. And that input the watershed areas, what the surface cover is, so if it's roads, houses, field, whatever, it takes into that account to get the runoff values. And then from there, part of what we did is using the, the flood data that we had from the 2024 event, we kind of calibrated our model based on that. Because during that flood event, we were kind of around town and obviously on Red Leaf Court, shooting elevations of where water got to and, and things like that. So we, we calibrated our model once we had all those inputs. So the next page, Steve, is the results. So the total watershed area that flows to that 133 inch culvert is 581.03 acres. And from that, there's 149.5 of those acres that are within city limits. And once we get to the assessment portion, Dennis will kind of talk about why that number is important, why there's a lot of the watershed outside of city limits. The next table is the precipitation events. So that's the amount of rain in a 24-hour storm and the recurrence. The one thing that we did want to look at is kind of a change from the previous flooding was that there is the Cottonwood County shop now that was not here during other flood events. So the table three kind of outlines, based on what we think the pre-runoff stage from that or from that site would be versus what they came up with. And as you can see, we figured based on our modeling that they are releasing a lot more water than what they should be. So on the JAG pre-construction runoff rates, so that would be before construction. So when it was just a field, that would be what the runoff rate from each one of those storm events would be. And then, as you can see, in the last two columns, or I guess the column over to your, the first column is what Widseth, who was the engineer on that project, came up for pre-construction rates. So as you can see, there is a considerable difference of, in a 100-year storm of almost 60 CFS. And so we, we wanted to look to see if there could be a contributing factor of having that much more runoff coming, coming down towards 18th Avenue and, and Red Leaf Court.
During, during the flood event of 2024, it came down the hill like a torrent. So I, it's not, it's, it's a significant amount.
So based on then that analysis, we looked at three different options. So one is to, I guess the, the main point of it would be to install a 36-inch storm sewer on the west side of 18th Avenue. And then we would also reverse some of the culverts to have flow on, so water could be taken on both sides of 18th Avenue. And that would flow down to those existing culverts that we would use as an outlet. So the first option was using a 36 storm sewer on the west side of 18th Avenue. The second option, it was the same scenario, but using a 54-inch storm sewer on the west side. And then option three was to basically create more ponding area behind Red Leaf Court by kind of the tree line. There's the, there's kind of a tree line that marks the city limits. And so we would kind of use that area to make a bigger ponding area to help relieve some of the pressure on that existing 33-inch culvert that's existing. So based on our analysis, option three ended up being, or option two, sorry, option two with the 54-inch on the west side of the road, ended up being the option that reduced or lowered the flood elevation on the catch basins at, on River Road. And as you can see, in the 100-year storm, it lowered it almost seven tenths of a foot. And at that point, that was only an initial, during the initial surge of the runoff. After one hour of that initial surge, then the water level dropped below catch basin elevation in that 54-inch scenario. From there, then the report goes to cost estimates and assessments and Dennis is going to kind of talk about that.
So one thing that's, oops. One thing that's unique about this project is there's so much of the runoff comes from outside of the city limits. Back in 1982, I think it was, we did a 13th Street Storm Sewer. It was a county-state aid, kind of a similar thing where the county-state aid paid for all the, all the utilities. That, there was some of that storm sewer that was assessed. It was kind of a assessment, it was part of the five-year street program. And the consensus of the council back then was that 13th Street, because it was a county-state aid highway, should be assessed a similar amount than, than that, as everybody else in the city. So that was one way that they made the assessment on 13th Street be equivalent to the other people in town. So that was kind of a unique situation. Other than that, and Steve, you might correct me, but I, I, I don't think there's any other storm sewer in town that's ever been assessed, or very little of it. And all the jobs that I can remember.
Ju- just what's done in street projects and that gets assessed to the proper.
And, and it's just a very small portion because it's kind of lumped into what the city shares.
It's lumped into the whole project and it's divided out as part of the street.
But typically, the, the storm sewer is not included in the, you know, part of the assessments.
It is, it is part of the assessment in the street portion.
I don't think so, Steve, but that.
We're showing it in our next project that way, so.
Okay. So anyway, just, just that it's unique and that there's so much of the watershed outside of the city limits. It's almost two-thirds to a third. So anyway, that, that's unique to this, this project. So on, in your, as you go back further, past the cost estimates, appendix B has all the options for assessments. And so what we wanted to do is show, you know, we, we calculated a square foot cost for all the storm sewers. And the first option is, or the first page is option one, which is the 36-inch storm sewer. The, the land in, or the, this is based on the entire watershed. So the cost is only two cents per square foot. But that includes all the land outside of the city limits and those are in yellow in your brochures. The next one is just that the, the, those waters, those areas are taken out and the price per square foot goes up to almost eight cents per square foot. So on the next option, that's the entire watershed. That one's, with the entire watershed, it's about two and a half cents. And the next one is the watershed with the city option, that's almost nine, a little over nine cents, nine and a half cents per square foot. And then option three, that's, if we did that one, that's only three tenths of a cent per, per square foot. And the city's share would be about one cent. So those are the options available.
Maybe.
Any questions?
Maybe hit the, maybe hit the cost estimates, if you would.
Okay, the option one, we're estimating, that's with the 36-inch storm sewer. We're estimating that to be 508,000, about 508,000. With a 54-inch culvert, we're estimating that to be about 614,000. And the option three, that estimate is about 88,000. Any, any questions?
I got one quick. Why wouldn't you want to build a retaining pond to hold the water back before it even gets into the system? On the county side, because it comes, the water comes from the country anyways, so why not keep it in the pond?
That would be, that would be. That, that would be a good option, but how do you? The question is, how do you get the township to participate? Pankinans actually have a retaining wall, or retaining pond farther to the northeast of, if you know where Gene Pankin lives, almost straight east of his house. On the center of the field, there is a retaining structure there. But, you know, again, it's outside of city limits. You'd have to have the township participate, so I mean, that's the difficult thing.
Have we asked, have we asked them to participate in this at all, or?
I mean, that's something we, we, we should look into, obviously, and, and maybe they would participate, I, I don't know. But generally, I would say they're on the high side of the, of the watershed. And if you know how farm drainage is, is, is assessed, it's, I mean, it's an option, we should look at it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, also you might as well just talk about what natural drainage is and what some of the laws pertaining to natural drainage are too.
And like I said, the, the county rules for assessments, it's, it, it, it's based on benefited acres. And typically, the, they're going to be on the high side of all this. And their, their assessments typically are very, very small, the farther you are away from the, from, you know, like say the outlet. So it would, it would be a really difficult thing to have the viewers come out and come up with a, because we've had to do it in the past in different, in other cities. It's really difficult to show farmland benefit versus city benefits.
Wouldn't be a benefit, it'd be a damage, wouldn't it? If it damaged, all that water comes down, damages homes and streets and everything like that?
That, that's not the way the ditch law works. It, it sounds good, but that's not the way, the, the, the way the ditch law is set up. The way they view a ditch is based on benefit to the farmland and not, because they're on the top of the hill. They're not getting, you know, they're not going to get very much benefit, so it's going to be very difficult to show that they're, you know, benefiting much. Because if you go through some of these assessments based on the square foot basis, I think there's a couple of these farms that would have $200,000, $300,000 worth of assessments against them. And that, that's going to be really, 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 really difficult to show that, that it's, you know, worth that, that much benefit.
When the county water comes down into the city, it crosses the river road, where does it go from there? What does it do to the houses down the street?
Well, that's why 18th Avenue, or that's why Red Leaf Court floods. You know, it all comes down to that flat ground. And then the storm sewer isn't big enough to take it out fast enough. Even though ponds, a lot of farm ground, the, the queering land all floods. The, it was Lloyd Cruz land, all floods. Mike, do you remember how many acres floods? I mean, it's like 20 acres that floods. So it's a, I mean, there already is a large stormwater pond in, in basically the county property. But there's just, it just gets in the bottleneck there because there's so many, you know, like I said, there used to be three culverts that took all this water and now there's only one.
I'm, I'm not pointing fingers, but I'm going to, I want to bring up the, the new county shop. Now, isn't it by law, when they do an improvement like that, that the, 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 there's, it's supposed to be designed with ponds so that it doesn't increase the, the flow? And it sounds like you're saying that, that you feel that, that, that construction adversely affected Red Leaf Court.
You know, because the flood is so large, it, it, you know, it's, it's, I think it was 50 CFS compared to 100, you know, the whole watershed to 150. So it, I think it only raised the, the water up, you know, maybe a couple of tenths or three tenths. But it's just the, like you say, Danny, they were, they were supposed to, they're supposed to provide the same outflow as pre, prior to construction versus, and if you go up there and see the structure that they installed, I mean, it's, it's, it's a 36-inch pipe that comes out, or 40, I think it's 48-inch pipe that comes out of that structure. Well, it was all CRP land before. I mean, there's no equivalent to that. Like I said, it came out, during that last storm, it came out of there like a river. You know, a 36-inch or 40, I think it's 48-inch pipe, there's a lot of flow coming out of there. And prior to that, it was just farm ground, which didn't have hardly any runoff. So the county should be, you know, called out to see what they're, they would do.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be pointing fingers, but that's, that's a thought I have, you know, what you're saying, yeah.
It all contributes.
If we were to do this, this Plan Three, the $488,000, you feel that that would do an adequate job?
What it would do would be to flood, you know, there'd be a, what it is, there'd be a dike across 18th Avenue, basically. So that would be the, or Great, Great Ben Bolivar, I'm sorry. So the, the flooding would stay in the, in the farm ground. I mean, we still would get, we'd still have to do some stuff at Red Leaf Court. But if we move the culvert back, that's that Steve Byhoffers, behind that, behind that dike, then that area wouldn't, you know, as long as that dike didn't get overtopped, you'd keep the water outside of Red Leaf Court.
And how high would the dike be potentially? At what level?
I think it was about a foot, foot and a half.
When you look at the cost, if that's a viable option, I, you know, I think, I believe the street committee recommended that option when we, we talked about it. So the option three, but. I, I, I still, I, I just want to make sure that, that you're comfortable with that, that would help.
I mean, obviously, it still has a potential for some flooding, but I think it's controllable. If you, if you got that culvert. If you, if you got that culvert by Ho- Byhoffers behind that dyke, and the dyke could control it, it would, it would ultimately get down through the eighteen inch, eighteen inch cul- or the thirty-three inch culvert on the east side.
I mean, we hope we don't see a flood like we did in two twenty-four, but we can't. The way things are going, we seem to get them more frequently than we did before.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh Dennis, with the dyke or berm that's put in there along there to keep that water back, is there any concerns about doing that? I mean, do we need, you know, landowner approvals, permissions, permits, anything like that, you know, to to form that? Because we're gonna essentially flood in that area for a short period of time. I know it floods now, but I just, I didn't know.
Yeah, it's, it would flood the same area. It's actually, Great Ben Boulevard actually is a, you know, city right-of-way. So it shouldn't require any extra permits um from anybody else, as long as we keep it in the right-of-way.
A quick question, um uh is it more like a berm or more like a dyke? I mean, what would be the difference there?
Yeah, either one. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a shallow berm, um dyke. Um so it's just high enough so that um we're hoping that the water went over top that that dyke.
Um I guess my question then, um what about the different driveways and properties that um don't have culverts or or the di- trying to think of how I wanna say it. Um, you know, when you say it's flowing down, but some of them don't have the culvert, how is that gonna work with the flow?
So um on the west side of um Eighteenth Avenue, I think in our cost estimate, we have that we've put some culverts in. So that it, that the west side of the of um um Red Leaf Court or Eighteenth Avenue could flow to the south um and get to the outlet that that's there already.
So that would be as part of the option three with the ponding, then doing the extra culverts?
Yes.
Is in on that one?
Yeah, yes.
And that would include some ditch shaping and 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 things of that sort, so you'd get some over-the-top runoff?
Yeah, on the Eighteenth Avenue, then that um west ditch would be graded so it ran to the south.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you guys for being here and explaining. Well done. It's a good and thorough explanation, I think. So next, then, we have the resolution ratifying calling for a feasibility study, receiving feasibility study, and calling for a public hearing in regard to this storm sewer project.
I'll introduce the resolution to call for a public hearing feasibility study.
I'll second that.
The resolution has been introduced by Dennis, second by Jason. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Quaid.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
The council previously approved this study, feasibility study. The task agreement with that was for eighteen thousand dollars. They've completed the study, done the presentation, so that's been been paid.
Okay. Up next, number seven on the agenda here, we've got resolution for MinDOT twenty twenty-five, local road improvement program, program funding.
Okay, I'll do this one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Um so the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation uh put some money into the local road improvement um project fund again for twenty twenty-five. Uh the application guide and the information became available on their website this morning. Um this is a grant that the city of Wyndham has applied for twice before. It's for the reconstruction of Tenth Street from Highway sixty seventy-one, past Downtown Square, down to the Riverview Apartments, takes a turn at that point, turns into River Road. And then that inner then intersects with County Road thirteen. And that's the other termus is where this road can, where River Road connects with County Road thirteen. So it's a fairly long stretch of road that needs to be redone. We had done some flood repair after the twenty nineteen flood, um but the infrastructure is, it um needs to be replaced in this section of town. And the road surface has seen a lot better days, especially if you've driven past Bark and the Fire Hall and some of those places. The cost estimate on this project is right at six million. Um those are updated numbers from our engineers. The maximum grant award or grant request in the paperwork provided by MinDOT is one point five million. And so really, at this time, um this resolution is requesting support of the, a resolution of support for the city to make an application for the local road improvement dollars. Um we are a city under five thousand, so this um needs to be sponsored by Cottonwood County. They would be essentially receiving the dollars and then putting them out to the city if the city were awarded the grant. The resolution support for the county board was at their, on their agenda this morning and was unanimously approved by them. Um they've supported the last two applications that we've submitted as well. Uh the application here is due in December, so there is some time. We feel we have a good candidate for this grant, because it's roads of local, well, local road improvement, but it's for roads of regional significance. And that we've got Bark, which draws a number of folks for their um type of events that they have. Uh we've got our downtown commercial district that borders part of this. We have low-income housing with the Riverview Apartments, so we check a lot of boxes there. Um there would be, you know, with this, you know, and as we do with all our street projects, probably some pedestrian improvements. There's some sidewalk curb cuts, things like that, um that would also pertain to pedestrians. So we're asking at this time for your approval to go ahead and submit this grant application. Like, you know, obviously, we were hopeful we would get it. We won't probably find out till sometime in the first quarter of twenty-six. And so if this were awarded, then we would start the same process we're talking about with the Red Leaf Court or the First Avenue Project, calling for feasibility studies, things like that, and going out for um uh that kind of work at that time. As with any grant, if it's awarded, it is always up to the council whether you accept it or not. So this isn't your final decision, but um this is one step on that process.
I would definitely introduce the resolution uh to move forward with applying for the local road improvement program funding.
I'll second it.
Resolution is introduced by Jenny, second by Scott. Is there any further discussion? I have one question. It goes on Tenth Street from Highway sixty until approximately what intersection?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth Street, okay. Any other discussion?
Um with this, uh, sorry, with this application, does uh emergency services factor in there as well as being a hub and?
Correct, yeah. We would use that as one of our other um points for why it's significant to us is our Fire Hall and ambulance department is on that corner as well. So, yep, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Okay. Benson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Quaid.
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong, so Steve, this will be our third time applying for this? So third time's a charm, fingers crossed, city of Wyndham, we can get this through.
I did, uh, I looked back at our previous applications. We had some letters of support um from some local businesses, um from Bark, from the school district. And so I did talk to our EDA director today, and she's gonna start um not only just kinda talking to the people that are on the route, um the business owners and what, so they know that, hey, we're looking at this and give them a heads up. But also, if there's people that choose to give us a lot of support for the project, we'd certainly accept it.
Did we ever get a reason why we didn't get either of the first two?
Uh just, uh, they get solicitations from all over the state, they've got a ranking criteria, they start funding projects, and when they run out of money, that's the end of it. So um the first time we applied, we were literally, I think, one or two projects from being funded. And I don't know what our rank was the last time, but the county, interim county engineer said he had looked it up, and we were not quite as close, but we're still right towards the top. So he thinks that, you know, certainly, being our third time, maybe that would get us a little more um oomph over there's a goal line.
Uh as far as amounts, what's the amount of money they have in this, this time around?
I believe there's forty-five or forty-seven million in the pot, and I guess I don't know the history of what was in it previously.
All right, moving on, number eight on the agenda is a resolution calling for a feasibility study for First Avenue twenty twenty-six street project. John, well, welcome, John Ketsenberg.
If they're tired of me, John will be coming.
Welcome, John.
Good evening, John Ketsenberg, Streets and Parks. Um like the street committee and everything's kinda came up. We're talking about trying to get First Avenue down and everything, so we're looking at doing a feasibility study to start moving that through. Um we had Geotech in town and did a bunch of dirt work to looking at and see what the bases and everything, so that stuff all came back. So we talked to the utility commission and everything, and they gave us a go-ahead to start moving forward with that. They got a minor amount of water work they wanna do to it, maybe, so we're just trying to get everything together and see what you guys wanna do and move the project forward.
I'll go ahead and tell you what I wanna do. I'm calling for the feasible study, make a motion for the feasible study and for First Avenue.
Well, I don't even need to comment, then, I'll just second that.
Thank you.
The resolution has been introduced by Scott and second by Jenny, calling for a feasibility study for First Avenue for the twenty twenty-six street project. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna say that it, the reason I'm so quick to go after it, it's one of the worst roads that we got in town here, and it, it needs help. But it is a beginning to what we wanted to accomplish with our city, get our roads started. So we start with the worst and can work our way back to the, get up to the ones that needed even, not worse than this, but worse is a bad word. But I mean, this road is tough. It needs it really bad, and it goes all the way, one end of town, all the way through to the other. So it's, it's one that needs to be done. That's why I was so quick to jump on it.
Yeah, and I think as, you know, part of the street committee, Dennis and I, um we've had a lot of meetings on this and looking at ways, you know, we know that streets are a priority, and that is one thing that we really wanted to push. Um and that we've been trying to work on pushing projects through. And I think, you know, as you see just on our agenda tonight, you know, looking at trying to make these improvements, get going on First Avenue. We don't wanna be behind the eight ball. We wanna get out and make sure we're doing things in a timely manner so that we can get uh information out. Um and also, you know, fingers crossed that we can get the Tenth Street project going. I mean, we had hoped that before, and we didn't, but, you know, if we can get that going too, um I'm just like, wow, the city of Wyndham, you know, if we can get some streets going like this, uh our street department's gonna be very busy. But I think Wyndham citizens will be very happy to see that we're making some good strides in getting our streets improved around town.
Any other discussion?
I've had more comments from the public on First Avenue than probably any other subject on the city.
Don't get me wrong, you guys are doing a good job with what you got, but it's a tough road.
Anyone else have anything? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Espen.
Resolution has been introduced. Next up, I hope you're comfy, John. You're up next. Street closure requests for the homecoming parade September twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five.
The Wyndham School has requested that the city close Seventeenth Street between, excuse me, the southwest entrance of the high school and Ninth Avenue. And it's from nine thirty AM till eleven AM, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. The school is having a homecoming parade around the school, and I got a little map up there that Steve just popped up. So it's not gonna be much of a closure, other than trying to get out of town. So if anybody wants to go into town, you're gonna have to roll down River Road. Talked to the police chief and everything, he doesn't see a problem with it either, so I recommend that we close that down for the kids to have a little homecoming parade.
I make a motion to the same.
I'll second.
Motion is introduced by Jason, second by Jenny. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, John. Up next, get real comfy. Um up next, number ten, we have park and rec recommendations, and there are three parts to this. The Island Park closure, the Castle Kingdom study and recommendation, and the Ego Field renovation. So we'll have three discussions, three action items, and we might see Tim join now or later? Tim will join now. So we will start first with the Island Park closure discussion.
The Park and Rec Recreation Commission has requested that the city council close Island Park from October first to November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five for this construction of the berm and the shelter pad, with the expect, exceptions of the football games. The street and superintendent agrees with the closures. Um Mathwich Construction will be working on the berm with heavy equipment. Multiple loads of clay and dirt will be hauled into the park. For the safety of the residents of Wyndham and the construction workers, it will be in our best interest to close the park. The street department will bring barricades and pick them up.
Seems forward, uh all straightforward. Um can I make a motion right now just to accept this um Island Park closure while they're working on the berm?
And John, um the dog park will be, the fencing will be coming down as part of the berm construction, right? So that's another reason that there's no need to be in the park, correct?
Correct, and like we were talking, there might be one or two football games, depends on how the, they play. And that's not gonna kinda be affected, so I mean, they might have to drive over a little hump or bump, but we should be able to play football down there.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Jason, second by Jim, to approve the recommendation for the Island Park closure from October first to November twenty-sixth. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the Castle Kingdom study and recommendation. Guys?
A recommendation by the Park and Rec Commission that was made to take down Castle Kingdom on October first based on safety concerns that were revealed during a safety audit performed by AIAE Institute. This motion also includes that the city start applying for grants, so the playground can be replaced as quickly as possible. City staff will be able to take down the playground with city equipment, and that an outside contractor would not be paid to take it down. There would also be some disposal costs to get rid of the material.
Well, I would like to say that um we've been talking about this for years. We've been band-aiding this for years. Um I know as part of being on Park and Rec, we have been up there year after year, looking at it and seeing the decline. And the time has come. We had, you know, a professional audit come in and take a look at it to let us know. I mean, it was more that, you know, it's not just people's opinion on our Park and Rec Committee. This is a professional audit that came in and looked and went over. Um if you look at our, our packet, you'll see their study in there, so you can see the. So you can see the information and the concerns that they pointed out. And I think after you look at that and read that, you know that there is just no, no saving anymore to Castle Kingdom. And it is too big of a hazard, safety hazard, to have our children playing on it or near it. And so I think, you know, Park and Rec making that recommendation that we close it. Obviously, we can't think that we're going to close it and just put tape around it and say, stay out of here. That's not going to work for children. So we need, if we're going to close it, it needs to come down, you know, as soon as possible. It is, you know, I guess the time of year to bring it down. And then I really hope that grants and other sources of funding and things are going to come available and be out there to really pull together as a community to get something similar to Castle Kingdom back in its place again. Hopefully by next spring, we can say we can, you know, get something back up there. We have, over the last few years, been looking at that as our Park and Rec Committee. We have designs, we have costs. It is the same company, I believe, that built the original Castle Kingdom. But it's just the material now that lasts, you know. It also would have the, I don't know what the padding stuff that the ground, the stuff on the ground, like the elementary school. So that it doesn't have the wood chips and it's compliant for ADA compliance, wheelchairs accessible, those kind of things. So really making an improvement to Castle Kingdom area. You know, when we get to that point of getting something new in its place, it is going to, you know, be really great from, you know, what we've looked at as Park and Rec. If and when the funding comes and we can replace that. Also, just so the community knows, it is similar to how Castle Kingdom was built years ago with that company. We purchased it, the company comes out and then we can have the city people come and help to build it. And so that's how part of that cost is reduced is because we can have our community members come and help put it together under their supervision. So then that way we do have the same warranties, safety, you know, all the things that you need to have in place. But I think that is a very good option. And so we, you know, just so people know, this isn't just a last minute, we're we're closing it, taking it down and we have no thoughts or planning. We have been thinking about this for years, we've been talking about this for years. It's finally come to the point of no return, we need to take it down. But also that we have been planning for years in the making of what's going to replace it, how we're going to do that. And now it's just going to come down to getting that additional funding to really make it happen. The sooner that we can do that, hopefully, like I said, it's just going to be during the winter that it'll be taken down. And hopefully by the spring, we'll have funding and we can get it going up again. So but that'll be on, you know, whoever can get all the funding and we'll talk about that during our budgeting as well this fall. Hopefully we can get things to come together. But yeah, I think it's definitely, definitely needed that it comes down for safety of our children.
Also, I want to reiterate, I want people to have, they have fond memories growing up with Castle Kingdom as our children and our grandchildren grow up with it. I want that memory to be good. I don't want somebody to get hurt, cut by a screw or have to go get stitches or live with a scar on their arm the rest of their life and have that as a bad experience. So with with that thought in mind, we we fought this for a while and we didn't want to take it down because kids do, it is a busy park. Even as bad as it is, it is still a busy park. But on the same token, we don't want nobody getting hurt. Because if one, even one person gets hurt, we ain't doing our job. Because we're here to protect children and make sure their life's a good life, not a not a memory they don't want. We want good memories here. So that's why we we fought this one, but it's it's one thing we have to do to protect the citizens of Wyndham and their children. So the we did all took little turns talking about the goods and bads with it. The good part is the sooner we get it down, the sooner we get it back up. So that's that's a that's a hard part of it, but it's a good part of it. Because like I said, that's a very busy, busy park up there. And that whole recreational areas, it was a dream years ago because when I was a kid, it was just a hayfield out there. Now you look at what it is, right? What Wyndham's built it up today and the future of it coming down the road is going to be something special. So that's why I want people, because like I said, we used to sled, go sledding down there. And now people are playing and spending the days from sunup to sundown out there. I mean, many different stuff going on and I want that to be a good memory for people. Thank you.
I would like to say, first off, so if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the park was built in nineteen ninety five and it initially had a fifteen year lifespan? In there?
Oh, let me read this from Leathers. This came directly from Leathers Company. A certificate of substantial completion was cast in ten was issued on June nineteenth, nineteen ninety five. Our first generation playgrounds were expected to last twenty to twenty five years depending on their location and level TLC. So as they stated, they received, so huge kudos to your town for nearly, well, this is a couple of years ago, twenty eight years, but doing the math, we're over thirty. So and for the new ones, it's all recycled lumber designs. And like I say, they talk about making their wow factor economic economically friendly building materials. We have one of the lowest maintenance costs in the industry and much longer lifespan, thirty five plus years. As an early leader in accessibility play or playgrounds, not only meet but exceed ADA guidelines. And goes into propaganda about brochures and everything else.
Well, my point was, well done on the upkeep. Anybody that's ever worked on that park, because it did make it thirty years, not that maybe it should have. But I was up there today and I mean, this feasibility study doesn't lie, but I I mean, it really doesn't. And that's what I'm here to say too. I was up there with my kids that are eleven and fourteen and they're, they can take care of themselves. And I was like, oh, be careful. And I was walking up tires and there's no handrails and it's just time. And I think that if if anyone is not sure it's a good decision to take this park down, they just need to go up there. Because you don't have to get too far into it to see it. And you know, progress is messy. It it just has to be done. I mean, we're we're at that point. It is going to be expensive, but I know there's seed money for this. And at the last Park and Rec meeting, I was very encouraged myself about the grants that Sonia brought up. I think there's just a lot of good possibilities there and with fundraising efforts too. I know there are very committed individuals, organizations that are really on top of getting this park rebuilt very quickly. One thing I just also want to mention is I have taken some pictures. There are salvageable materials there and I've spoken to John today and some other members, some some business owners who are willing to help with storage of or whether we can, whatever we do, but there are materials. This isn't just all going to go to, I mean, there's a plastic slides, there's swings, there's a tic tac toe board. I I just think that we don't mean to just dump it all, you know, there's things we can reuse. Or maybe we can do some fundraising efforts in the future. But I just think it's the conversations that I had today, I was very encouraged that everybody's, of course, we're going to do everything we can. And and it just, I think it's far past time, so good work on that. And if anybody, does anyone have any further questions, comments, anything on this?
Did Councilmember Benson have to chase the buffaloes off when he was there or?
Fought fought the Indians, they were, no. It was, like I said, it was a good place to go play when we was kids and that's what we did. We played out in the open and now they got stuff like this to play with, I'm jealous.
Any other questions, comments or conversation on this? All right, man, we've been talking too long. Did we, who made the motion, Jenny, Scott, did we make a motion?
There's not been a motion made yet.
I'll make a motion to close down Castle Kingdom for in the study for recommendations.
I'll second.
The motion has been made by Scott and second by Jenny to close Castle Kingdom as of October first as per the safety audit performed and the recommendation by the Park and Rec Board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This one should be easier, right? Next up, Eagle Field renovation.
Yeah, Tim Hogan, Recreation Director. This is a recommendation by Park and Rec Commission was made to allow the softball association to start with groundwork on Eagle Field. The softball station, association would reshape the infield and plant new grass in the outfield. All of the costs would be incurred by the softball association for this project.
I'll make a motion to accept the Eagle Field, that, yeah.
So with like new grass seed, that kind of thing about watering, has that been talked about at all?
No, we have not have, so just to give you a little backstory on on what some future plans may be coming after this proposed project. Several improvements are being looked at for not just Eagle Field, but the recreation fields in general. It's been well over twenty years since the fields have been put in up there and and they're all in need of some TLC. We've we we do basic maintenance and, you know, if there's an irrigation leak, we fix it. But as they get overgrown and material moves and shifts and dragging, they're become, you know, gopher holes, there's ridges, there's low spots. You know, the fields are in need of shape reshaping and things like that. They want to take on this particular field as it reflects their their high school softball, their summer softball leagues to to start this this process. Now, as we get into that, with the with the reseeding, you know, and keeping that grass to a point where they want it, you know, there there could be additional discussions as to watering. How much water is going to be used on that field? If they're going to want to earn sprinklers, you know, more often than what we do as needed based on rainfall. Those will be more discussions that will have to come. There was a request kind of off the table, nothing that went through anything, but just conversations through email of a proposed contract, kind of like what the city has with the school on and with the baseball association with Island Park. So there could be some more things that would be brought to Park and Rec Commission that potentially could come to city council if more projects want to be done that would limit access or use of that field strictly to the school slash softball association. So that would be stuff that would come down the road. But this is just a needed project, just so that field is safe and and has the improvements for high school softball and their summer softball association that they're willing to put in. So that's what the recommendation is for any future projects or any future discussion with watering. Anything else that that comes down that pipeline would then be revisited for approval.
I'll still make the recommendation for accept for the Eagle Field.
I'll second. Motion has been made by Scott and second by Jenny to approve the recommendation by the Park and Rec Commission to allow the softball association to start with the groundwork on Eagle Field. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Watch out for buffalo.
Next up, twenty twenty six budget preliminary budget levy resolution. Welcome Donna Torkelson, Finance Director. Hello.
Okay, in your packet tonight, there are the proposed budget reports. Can't hear me? Hopefully you you've got a chance to look at those. Going through those reports, the the budget adjustments were based on a number of factors. The key factors for the preliminary budget included inflationary price increases on supplies, construction projects trending lower, equipment prices increasing increases, equipment price increases continuing to trend higher. The last, this is the last year, twenty twenty six of the labor contracts. So that is a COLA increase of five percent for the IBW and the supervisory personnel and a two point four percent increase for the LES, union members. Work comp, property liability and auto insurance costs are projected to be up three to ten percent. There was no increase in state aid for twenty twenty six. Small cities transportation aid funds distributed for twenty six was approximately seventy thousand dollars. One thing to note for the pool budget, what we did there was to reduce that revenue since there there will be no pool for next year. I mean, that's a given. So the only, the only tax levy for the pool will be just the personnel costs of the that percentage of Tim's wages and just a few miscellaneous. We felt we needed to keep, still keep property insurance, some liability insurance on there and things like that. If it's going to be sitting there, it should be, should be insured. That had an impact of cutting eighty thousand ninety eight dollars from the from the preliminary levy. The debt service for Island Park berm and the twenty twenty five alley project adds about seventy eight thousand to the tax levy for twenty twenty six. Looking at the potential twenty twenty six street project with a four million dollar general obligation bond, that will add an estimated three hundred fourteen thousand two hundred dollar to debt service. And that is paid via property taxes. However, we had the two thousand nine street project drop off for twenty twenty five was the last year that that was paid, that ended, which reduced the debt service by a hundred and twenty five thousand. So there is a little bit coming off, but obviously two thousand nine prices aren't compared to twenty twenty six prices. So there's also a list of the capital improvement. We do have a placeholder in there for three hundred fifty thousand dollars for capital expenditures and that's sixty two thousand dollars less than what was approved in twenty twenty five. But of course, when you have your budget workshops or your levy workshops, then you can talk about what you'd like to see budgeted for capital expenditures. Steve and I had met with the department heads. We went through everyone's budget, line item by line item. And they were very cooperating and really took a hard look at what their, what their trends were. And and we did, we were able to reduce some of those expenditures from the year before. The twenty twenty five property tax levy was two million six hundred eighty two thousand five hundred and one dollars. And that was up four point seven one percent from twenty four. The city's tax rate continues to be stable, but it went up last year and now stands at point six three two five three. And that change was due to a decrease in the property tax, the property valuations last year and then an increase in the property tax levy. The proposed property tax levy for twenty twenty six could raise or lower the tax rate within the point one oh 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 range as the anticipated property valuation is about equal to the proposed tax levy increase. The city does need to sit their preliminary property tax levy by September thirtieth. It's our recommendation that the city council set that at four point nine percent. It's our recommendation that the city council set that at 4.9% for the preliminary levy increase. Of course, that, as always, that can always go down, but it can't go up once you set that preliminary levy. So that does give you some latitude for your capital projects. And I don't know if Steve wants to touch on some of those points that I skipped. No? Okay. Good deal. I guess the, the things, you know, the, the biggest things that we looked at were the future street projects and the pool. Of course, you know, we do have a lot of moving parts right now going on. So I guess that is, unless you have questions on any of those reports, but that is what we're recommending, that you set the 26 preliminary tax levy not to exceed the amount of $2,814,000, which is a 4.9% increase from 2025.
I think you've done a good job of coming up with this budget to this point. I think I made this statement last night. I'm for the taxpayers of the city of Wyndham, so I'm always looking out for them. I guess I, I would make the motion that we approve this preliminary tax levy at 4.9% increase for next year. My goal would that we be, get, get closer and we get into this a little further, that we get closer to the, what the inflation rate is for the year, which is, I hear in the 2.7, 2.9% range. But if we can do that, I would be happy.
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Dennis and second by Scott. Is there any discussion? Jason?
I do appreciate the clarity of explaining why rates do rise. Obviously, things continue to change. A lot of things are in flux, obviously building things. It's going to be changing. And so I for one am going to do my best, and I'm sure we will do our best to try to bring that down as much as we're able to.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. We'll do a roll call instead.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Sherman.
Yes.
Espin.
Benson.
Yes.
It does, it's highlighted right in front of me, but thankfully there are, someone will tell me when I do the wrong thing here. Thank you very much, Donna. Nice work on that.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, set budget workshop dates. Steve, would you like to discuss that with us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So what I did, just you can see them, I'm on the packet. The council typically has done either two or three budget meetings, budget workshop. Those of you, I think all of you have experienced that before. We have enterprise funds, non-enterprise funds and general fund. And just for the public's information, enterprise funds are business self-supporting funds like the water, sewer, electric utility. Non-enterprise funds are tax-supported, like the arena, community center where they generate some revenue, but not enough to be self-supporting. And then the general fund are things like, you know, PD, building and zoning, EDA, things that don't generate typically the dollars needed to support themselves and are supported with tax money and local government aid. So we've got kind of those three categories of budgets to look at in addition to what you're going to do for the capital requests. So as I mentioned, council usually has done two or three meetings. If you select to do two, be prepared for about a four-hour meeting or better, as you well know. If you do three, we can hopefully keep them down to that, you know, two to three hour range. So what I did is I put together the off Tuesdays, because you guys generally block off Tuesdays just because of council meetings. And so September, we happen to have five Tuesdays in this month. We had a council meeting on the second, we have our meeting tonight, but the 23rd and 30th are also Tuesdays this month. And then October 14th and October 28th. What we would then do in November is get that finalized budget put together, get every, all our I's, D's, O's crossed, and then our, we have our truth in taxation or public input meeting, that first meeting of December. So you do have all four of these dates available to you. You can pick the Tuesdays or some other date that you would like, but these are just for suggestion and start of discussion. So, thank you.
Does anyone have any input right off the bat?
Sounds like a deal to me, Steve. The only thing, Iowa will be gone from, I believe, the 4th to about the 12th of October, but...
Well, if we timed these right, you wouldn't miss any of them.
I for one don't want to do just the two meetings. I prefer three to five, I'm just kidding, three.
I think we did three last year, didn't we, I, I think that went well. I'd be in favor of three.
I'm saying heads nod for three. Do you want to pick three these Tuesdays or do you want to pick some other dates? I guess, up to you. If we could, I maybe would skip the 23rd if that's possible, just because I want to give department heads time to sign up so they can come and do the presentation. And that's just a week out from now. We can make it work, it's tight, but we can make it work. But I guess I'd leave it up to you guys.
I noticed that October 14th for me is one date that won't work, so.
I would say if you could make it work, Steve, let's just pick the dates you got and go for them, the 23rd and the 30th and 28th.
Okay, we can do that. There'll be a little bit of a gap between September 30th and October 28th, so please don't forget your, where you're at. Okay, I, we can do that, I'll get those going then. So if you would potentially have a motion setting special meetings for those dates, we can get those on record, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget dates for workshops for the budget dates.
It'll be September 23rd, September 30th and October 28th.
I'll second that.
Who got that second? Jim? Motion made by Scott, second by Jim to set the budget workshop, workshop dates for September 23rd, September 30th and October 28th. Is there any further discussion?
And what time are we planning and location?
Yeah, what time would you like to do it? Typically, you've done these at the community center, just a little more informal atmosphere. I was planning to continue that as long as those dates are open for the community center. Start time is up, up to you. If they're going to be a little bit longer meeting, you may want to start a little bit earlier, so you're not burning the midnight oil.
Some of us are getting older and need to go to bed earlier.
Buffalo man recognizes your remark.
Bill over here, yeah. I would say 5:30. Is everybody okay with 5:30? Okay, we'll go for 5:30.
So do we need to amend that or just add that in?
If the motioner and the seconder would accept that, I think that's probably...
Yeah, I'll accept it.
Do you accept it, Jim?
I think that's wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, John Nelson for the liquor store will discuss the fire department promotional fund transfer. Thank you, John.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. So last Thursday, we wrapped up our seventh annual MMBA Fire Department fundraiser, which is in collaboration with the MMBA in Molson Coors. It's one of the community value events we do to promote the community value of the municipal liquor store. So this event ran from August 1st to September 11th. We did four things this month for the fire department. The first thing is we partnered with the fire department to do a pallet raffle. So there is still tickets available for the pallet raffle. There's 1,000 tickets printed and I believe a good majority of them are out with local firefighters now. So once they're sold out, we do the drawing on the end of fire prevention week. There's always a pancake breakfast that we tend to do at the fire hall. So October 12th at 1:00 PM, that drawing will take place. Molson Coors, a few years back, printed some specialty fire boots. So we had those on our display or up on the counter for customers to drop money in as a donation to the fire department. During that boot donation collection, we collected $82 in cash. So that money is going to be turned over to the Wyndham Fire Department to be deposited in the Relief Association. Another fun thing that we did this year, just last weekend, we did a rare allocated bourbon release drawing in which we kind of did a tasting in store from 11:00 to 1:00. And then the fire department was on site to collect donations for additional registration tickets into the drawing for an opportunity to purchase a bottle. We had just under 50 people attend the event. There was not a parking spot in front of the liquor store at all on Saturday. So it was quite interesting, the store was quite full. We had over $5,000 worth of bourbon sold through the register in about a half hour after the drawing was complete. So, and then the fire department, they collected donations for those additional registrations and they received $1,040 for one hour's work down there. So, so that was fun. Chief Derrickson and Third Assistant Chief Kristen Porth were both on site and they had a good time, so. And then what I need from you guys tonight is we also pledged a portion of proceeds to the fire department, to their Coors Light sold, 75 cents for every 15 or 18 pack, 50 cents for every nine pack or 12 pack and a quarter for every six pack sold. So Steve has up on the screen the breakdown of those numbers. In total, there was 744 units sold during that time. With that calculation, it breaks down to a transfer amount of $573. In years past, last year that transfer amount was $692.50. The year before that was $607.50. So I'm looking for a motion to transfer $573 from the liquor fund to the fire department general fund.
I'll make a motion to transfer the money from the liquor store to the fire department. The fund transfer.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Jason, second by Jim to transfer all of the, the $573 from the liquor store fund to the fire department fund. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say thank you for participating and doing that for the Wyndham Liquor, from the, for the Wyndham Fire Department. I'm sure they appreciate it too, but as far as the citizens, it's a big thing for you guys to do for the community to help out no matter what. But thank you very much.
And I also think it's wonderful, the remodel and the expansion we did of the liquor store, that we could do all of this in there and you could get all these people in there in attendance. And just, you know, thank you for all the different, you know, raffles, donations, things, ideas that you come up with and participate in. And for, so people know that when they come out and shop local and do these things, it is benefiting our local community and our local fire department. And so, and I always try to tell people that, you know, if you're going to buy your liquor, your beverages, those kind of things, even if it costs a little bit more and you're driving out of town to do it, if you pay it here, and even if it is a little bit more, your gas money, think about that too, but it's going to help pay for our roads, our, you know, things here in our city. And we need, you know, as you looked at our agenda tonight, we have roads are huge, Castle Kingdom is huge, you know, repairing fields and, you know, different things like that. And so spending that money locally and helping and seeing how, when you do spend it locally, it comes back into our community and we're putting it back into the community. So thank you for the people that attended and thank you, John, for getting this all organized.
Just one note, I did ask a few customers and that where they all came from. We had customers for that from Laverne, Mankato. It was a good range of people that, I mean, there was a few people from town, but there was a lot of outer towners that came and also bought other things in store while they were there waiting too, so.
I also just want to add, nice work. I feel like you think outside the box and I like that. That bourbon fundraiser, you were not, those people don't mess around. When I was carrying out on that Friday, he was like, oh, we're going to do this bourbon tasting and they're going to buy raffle tickets. However, that worked and I was like, sure. And they did. So nice work. I think it's just really good to see you think outside the box and support a fellow department like that. You're a firefighter as well, correct? Yeah. So thank you very much for, for all of it. Nice, nice fund transfer there. Jason?
Did you receive any comments or hear about any comments about the aesthetics of the property? Because it has changed quite a bit in the last year.
People enjoy it. There's still people that haven't seen it that come in and, you know, I haven't been here for years. It's really changed and so you kind of go over it with them and realize how much room, room we gained so we could do things like this. There's no way that in the old store, that even with the displays down, that we could have got 20 people in there. And so there was room and there was more room that we, you know, we could have housed a few more if we needed to. I had five tables set up for tastings for two hours, you know. We could barely squeeze one in, in the old store to, to do a tasting in, so.
Does anyone else have anything? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You're up again, John. Personnel, starting wage adjustment for liquor store part-time employee.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. So last meeting on September 2nd, council member Benson and Councilman Quaid made a motion and a second to hire Gwen Myring as a non-union part-time liquor store clerk at a wage of $13 an hour. When we're, when Human Resources was implementing her into the system, they discovered that the system is set up for steps, not so much a range. You just can't apply a wage to someone, it has to be a certain step. So what we did is I had discussion with Gwen, caught Steve as he was leaving for vacation, and we adjusted her wage back down to 1275 so that it would fall in the rate, less than what city council had approved. So with that, the original plan was to hire at $13 an hour. So it is my recommendation to move her to 1375 an hour, which would be step two on the wage schedule for seasonal part-time swimming pool employees. And then date that back to September 3rd, which would be her effective start date. And then that would allow her to receive a dollar difference in pay for the hours she's already worked as retro pay. And I have talked with the employee and she is good with that, so.
I'll make the recommendation for the starting wage adjustment for the liquor store part-time employee.
I'll second. Motion has been made by Scott, second by Jenny to approve the hiring wage adjustment for Gwen Myring to 1375 an hour. Is there any other discussion?
No, just, you know, moving forward then, that we're cautious that we're putting the steps and the amounts instead of just putting an amount in. So, I mean, we learned, we learned something from that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, John. Does anyone have any new business? Going once, going twice, no new business. How about old business? Steve, would you like to start that off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So bit, bit of good news, we got this last week. You may remember that the city needed to engage some outside council to... You may remember that the city needed to engage some outside council to address a bankruptcy filing. High Life, which was Tri-Tech company, had, as you know, filed for bankruptcy back in twenty-twenty-three. The city provided utility services, as we normally do to any business. As they went through their bankruptcy hearing, some of the secured creditors that did not get fully reimbursed for their secured credit filed a lawsuit against any of the creditors that did receive payments up to ninety days before the bankruptcy filing. And since our utility bills out at that facility were just about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month, the potential clawback from those creditors was around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, hence, we've engaged the attorney who's licensed or barred in the state of Delaware. So, we provided them all of the billing information that then has been sent to the bankruptcy court and to the attorneys that are representing those secured parties. They have determined and voluntarily dismissed the lawsuit against City of Wyndham that the payments that were paid for the utilities were in the normal course of doing business. It wasn't like, hey, you provided a good or a service and High Life chose to pay us. You know, this was something that was obviously an ordinary course of business, and the thing that kind of helped us is that they had been set up on auto pay. So, it wasn't like every invoice, it got paid. They had a choice to pay it or not. It was automatically paid and paid out. So, this was good news for us, so this lawsuit has been dismissed. We had a five thousand dollar retainer, which we will get back, and our legal bills to date so far have been just under two thousand. So, I think we had estimated maybe thirty to forty thousand if this had gone south. So, good news all around on this one. So, just wanted you to be aware of it, so...
And just for the public's info, what could have been the max amount we would have had to pay back?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Wow. Awesome.
That's a lot of buffalo chips.
You would know.
That was really good news. Nice, nice notification to get there. Excellent.
Thanks, Steve, for doing what you did on that part, because it took a lot of work on your end to get all the pieces put together, though, but thank you again.
Thank you, yep. And City Attorney Schrammel deserves a lot of credit as well.
Thank him too, yes.
Yes, thank you both, Steve and Ron Schrammel. Does anyone else have any discussion on this or any other old business? Are you good? Okay. No more old business. So, does anyone have, could we possibly say anything we haven't said already tonight in council comments? Scott, would you like to start?
Buffalo man, yeah. With the seasons changing and you look at the crops and stuff like that, right now, I've talked to a few different farmers. They're going to start combining, so get ready for the combines, the tractors, and the late nights and the hard work the farmers in our farming community is going to do, the elevators. So, just keep an extra eye out for people moving around. So, just keep an eye out for them and us. So, everybody has a safe harvest and just do the best we can and take care of one another inside the city, because it's that time of year we need to start looking at closing things down and buttoning stuff up, because Mr. Winter's coming sometime here, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, do you have council comments?
No, I think we discussed a lot tonight.
Dennis, do you have council comments?
I probably do, but I don't, not tonight. Thank you.
Jason, do you have council comments?
No, for tonight, I wish everyone a great week.
Jim, have you got council comments?
No, I'm with Dennis on this.
Tonight? Okay. And I guess I just want to say to what we've said, I feel like it's going to seem like there's a lot of, you know, we're closing Island Park, and we're closing Castle Kingdom, and we don't have a pool, but I just feel it's going to be fine. Like, progress is messy. There are things that need to be done. And if you want to get on board with any fundraising for any of these events or anything like that, there are organizations out there that you can connect with. But just, I don't want the city to take a lot of heat. It's just going to be messy. There's things we've needed to do for a long time, and we're doing them, and everything just can't be open while it's happening. So, I hope everyone has a little bit of patience and grace, but I'm very excited for the future and to see all these projects completed. I think that's it. If no one has anything else, well, Steve, do you have anything? I'm sorry. Okay, we're good. We'll adjourn this meeting by unanimous consent.